I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council Study Session held on Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024, commencing at 7:00 PM. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Salahudine, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Fields, and online we have Councilmember Nueva Camina and myself, Council President Kritzler. There are three items on the agenda tonight: the 2024 Annual Community Survey Results, Police Technology Update, and Proposed Commerce Grant Award, and Council Talktime. The first item on the agenda is the 2024 Annual Community Survey Results. Lisa Maher, Deputy Executive Director, will introduce this item.
Good evening, Council. Lisa Maher, Deputy Director for the Executive Department. Joining me at the table tonight is Ian Stewart with EMC Research and Derek Wing, our city's Communication Manager. Tonight, Ian will be presenting the results of the city's annual survey to you, and we'll do our best to answer any questions you have following his presentation. Just one note before we get started, that any staff recommendations based on these findings will be included in upcoming budget offers during your budget discussions. And with that, I will turn it over to Ian.
It's off, it's good? Okay. Lights off means go, okay? Good evening, everybody. Ian Stewart, Senior Principal at EMC Research. I will take you through this presentation. And you said questions at the end? Is that your preference?
Yeah, or you can do it however.
Whatever you prefer. If you want to ask questions during, you can, or you can say them to the end. It's up to you. Okay. First, let me tell you what we did. The goal of the project is to measure general satisfaction with city government and a variety of things that we ask in the survey, and also ask about residents' priorities for future planning and improvements. This is a survey we've been doing for a number of years for the city of Redmond. This one was conducted the 14th of March through April 14th, about a month we were in the field for. Just like the '23 survey, we used an address-based sampling approach. Basically, what that means is, we take every possible working address in the city of Redmond. So we use the United States Postal Service addressed samples. That gets us about 98% coverage, and the whole point of statistical sampling is to try to get as big a sample as you can. So by using a universe of 98% of residences, that then allows us to reach basically every household potentially, right? Every household is then a potential subject of the survey. We sent out a bunch of invitations. I think there was a question that was seated to me that, how did we get to that? Well, essentially, we do enough to ensure we get enough of the responses back. So by sending out those random surveys, we then get responses back that get us to 547 total interviews. That works out to a margin of error of plus or minus 4.2 percentage points at the 97%, 95% confidence interval. We can talk about that more if you like, but basically what it means is, any number you're seeing is accurate within plus or minus four percentage points roughly of what we're showing on the screen. The more it's like a 90/10 answer, that margin of error starts to drop, right? And the more it's 50/50, that's when that four-point margin of error comes in exactly. A little bit more confidence at the far ends of the scale. We offer the survey in English, Spanish, and Chinese, and Hindi, but almost all respondents took it in English. So even though we offered that, we still got it back in primarily English language. If you look at Redmond's ACS community survey results, you're going to find there's very few people who are actually not functional English, that can't speak English very well enough to do a survey like this. But we still offer it at your direction. When we can, we compare to previous surveys. If you look in the upper right-hand corner, this is what the postcard looks like that people receive. We can zoom in on it if that's not visible to you, but basically, it's trying to be pretty generic. We're saying this is about stuff in the city, but we don't really say what exactly it's about. We try to make it generic, and that's on purpose, right? We want people to come do this survey without really knowing quite what the survey topics are about. Okay. Wanted to give you a sense of timing. Every year that we do this, there's always a media environment that's happening. And so this media environment, you can see there's a couple of things that are going to be relevant to our results later on. The headlines that we polled here, a couple from local media, a couple from regional media. We talked, there's some headlines here about homelessness and pushback at the city council. There's some other notes of protest. There's some signs that we polled here. So this was the environment that was happening around the time that we collected the survey results. I'm sure you're very familiar with that at the time. And you will see those in the results actually come up pretty substantially. Let's start with some questions we ask about quality of life. So this is a question we've asked all the way back to 2014. It's on the same scale of excellent, good, only fair, and poor. What I'm showing you here at the top, the positive, is the excellent and very good ratings combined. And then at the negative there is the only fair and poor ratings. The excellent itself, we actually broke out in that dotted line, so you could take the excellent at, you know, roughly, started back there, way back in 2014, at 33%. Today, at 26%. Pretty consistent over time. You can see that bar going. And then if you add it in the very good, you'd get to positive, right? So the positive, the very good in this instance is going to be around 50-ish percent, right, of that total response? So most of it is in the very good, not the excellent, but there still is some excellent. And particularly when you compare the excellent to the negative, right? We can see the excellent, 26%, is significantly higher than the negative at 6%. All the negative, the only fair and poor, very, very small percentages there. This is pretty consistent over time. There's been a slight decline, as you watched out of the positive back in the almost 90s when we started the survey, and it starts to drop off slowly, and then a little bit slower drop. And you'll see this, I'll mention it now because I think this will make sense as we look forward the rest of the survey. Redmond is urbanizing. If you take 2014 to 2024, Redmond is getting more and more buildings downtown, getting more and more people, more residents, more sort of urban feel. And so you're seeing that happen as you watch this survey and thinking about other results that you're seeing here, Redmond is urbanizing. And that's sort of a broad scope to say, what else changes in this survey? You'll see that as we go through here over time. One of the first questions we ask, if you look in the lower left-hand corner, you can see the question that we asked here. This is question number three. My eyesight's not quite good enough to see that. What is the best thing about living in Redmond? And so this is, as an open-ended question, we then let them say whatever they want. So we then put them back into categories. And so these categories, you could see the actual verbatim responses if you want to. You can actually look at the entire verbatim list of what people said that went into these categories. Accessibility, everything's close, that stays about the same. The net change is on the far right, so really, these are all really consistent. If we think about that margin of error being four, these are all within that margin of error change. So really, no differences between '23 and '24 in terms of what people think the best thing is about living in Redmond. Beautiful scenery, trails and parks, low crime, safe and cleanliness, those are the top three items. Those are all well over a 10% open-ended response that we think we consider significant. And then the community small town feel right there at 10%. A whole bunch of other answers there at like 1% or less that we don't put on the scale, but of course, you can see that if you're really interested in seeing everything that people said. What's more interesting here is when we look at the top-of-mind concerns. So, what do you think is the most important problem facing the city of Redmond today? And that's asked intentionally. This is when you look at the net changes now. Now you can see some differences, right? So affordable housing, cost of living, and taxes, we grouped into one at 28%. You could break those out if you wanted to when you look at them, but they're all kind of in the same theme. Look at growth over development over population, dropped nine points between last year and this year. Pretty significant drop, losing a share of that. But look at crime, up eight points. So opposite these two. Almost all of that went into crime. Traffic down a little bit. Homelessness up, about five points, just outside the margin of error. So this gives you a sense of what are the themes that we're looking at this year, growth over development over population, which was, one of the biggest ones, if you go back on time, we could actually see that was the top concern in Redmond if you go back a few years. Crime is now sort of catching up, but is still not quite at the top level, right? So there are four of them that reached 10%. Traffic, crime, growth over development over population, and affordable housing, cost of living, and taxes are combining together. So wanted to give you a sense of that. Looking back in time, going back to 2019, look at growth over development over population there at 2019, 29%, almost a third of mentions saying that. Consistently sort of dropping each year to now between '23 and '24, dropping 10 points. Obviously, the biggest jump there. And then look at crime, going from 3%, it's steadily increasing, three points up, four points up, and then doubling between '23 and '24. A lot of these other ones staying relatively consistent over time. Affordable housing did start to increase, but it made that biggest jump in '21, sort of a couple of points up there ever since. We also ask this question about what you think should be Redmond's number-one priority. Different way to ask the same question, right, about most important problem, if you think about it that way. But when you put it that way, crime actually comes out on top, and a net change of 12 points increased between '23 and '24. Affordable housing only up a couple of points. If you look at the rest of the net change, those are all within the margin of error. There's only one that really changes outside of the margin of error, that's crime, right? It goes up 12 points between '23 and '24. Okay. Moving on to a different section. One of the first things I want to show you here, we changed up the order a little bit. We wanted to show you information sources. So we asked this question really towards the end of the survey, and we say, for each of these items, tell me about where you get your information about what's happening in Redmond, what Redmond City Government is doing, about news and information generally. A couple of these are outside of the margin of error change. Word of mouth through friends and family actually went up 10 points between '23 and '24. We do this on a scale of regularly often, and then a couple of the ones I'm not showing you on the scale, but this combines the regularly and often with the two of them that were showing you the change. The Redmond Focus Print Newsletter dropped about six points, but the rest of these are up to some degree. They're all, you know, more or less margin of error changes, but City of Redmond's website, Redmond Weekly Email Newsletter, ones that the city controls, are all up a few points in other areas, while the Redmond Focus Print Newsletter is down about the same, right? About six points. One of the questions we asked for you pretty consistently is this question of Redmond's priority statement. So we basically read this to people, or they see it themselves, what are the four statements that are guiding Redmond's current priorities, and do you agree with that or not? This is really, we haven't seen any disagreement with this, really, right? The disagreement is only nine points here, and the strongly and somewhat disagree is so small that I can't even get the label in there. So vast majority of people are agreeing with this, but you're seeing it's a split between the somewhat agree and strongly agree, right? So yes, people are generally on board with what you're saying, not as vehemently, right? 46% saying strongly agrees, about half of everybody saying yes, which is a pretty good place to be if you're thinking about priorities, right? That half of you are strongly agreeing that these are the bright priorities for the city. Now we're moving into sections where I think you really start paying attention to some differences that are key here. So we do this on a scale of excellent, good, only fair, and poor. We ask a series of city job ratings on a series of items. We always ask the overall first, so that doesn't come out of rotation. They see overall before they see anything else. And then these other ones are always rotated, they're randomized, so they don't appear in the same order for any person, right? So I might get delivering services effectively, followed by focusing on priorities that matter. Someone else is going to get a totally different order of those, and that's intentional, where we're trying to reduce bias by changing the order of these. So on the far right, you're going to see the positive and negative combined. So that's the excellent and good together forms the positive. The only fair and poor are the negative. A couple of things we're looking out for here are, where's the intensity, right? Or is there intensity? In this instance, most of these, there's not a lot of intensity. Most of the ratings are in the good and the only fair, the two that kind of cluster around the middle, right? So if you look at the overall, almost 50% are giving us a good rating, another nine points in the excellent. So this is kind of balanced, the excellent and the poor, kind of even when we think about where the intensity lies there. But you'll see as we move through the rest of these, the intensity does start to change. We look at the next one, keeping community members informed on city programs, initiatives, projects, and issues. Still a net positive, 51% positive, right? Excellent and good. And look at the intensity, the excellent and the poor are about the same, but most of this, if you look at that 51 to 45, that's a pretty even split, especially when you compare it to how the city's doing overall at 58, 36. Delivering services effectively, also really positive, but look at where the majority of that is. It's in the good rating, right? So pretty good, but not as outstanding as some of these other ones. Using tax laws responsibly, we're now into a net negative. These, it's actually pretty even. We look at that, 39 to 43%. That's within the margin of error. It could be just as easily 41, 39, or vice versa. So these are pretty even with each other. But what you should notice here, look where the poor is, right? The poor is actually almost double plus what the excellent is. Same thing for that last one, focusing on the priorities that matter most to community members. So when you think about this, this is a progression. We've talked about this in the past. The overall is the first measure, right? That's the one we should put the most attention to, because it's the first impression everyone gives you of the city. It's generally positive, 58, 36, with a pretty good, most of that rating is in the good category. As you move through the rest of these, these get sort of harder and harder to answer because they're more detailed about things. You'll notice that because the don't know, I'm not really sure to answer that, starts to show up much more, right? 18% using tax laws responsibly. So these are harder grades, but they do progressively get sort of more negative as we move down the list, as people start to think about this. So overall, yes, people are happy with what we're doing. In some specific items of that, the ratings start to get poorer, right? And we start to get, see more negativity around that. And, or you could say only fair, if we're talking about government, like what are we really looking for this grade, right? Is a C-grade sort of passing grade? In that instance, then yes, we could say the only fair is in fact a passing grade here. We're looking at that throughout. If we do the two of those together, the good and the only fair, right? That's a majority in almost every instance. If you took the two middle ratings and put them together, you're getting a majority in some way. So as we're looking at the overall ratings, that first one that I mentioned to you, we've been tracking this over time, going all the way back to 2014. And it's been mostly positive almost everywhere we look at it, right? A majority saying some version of positive, either excellent or good. As we track it over time, the positive ratings were into the sort of the two-thirds or almost three-quarters back in the early, you know, 2014 to 2017 area. Then the first time we see a change is in '28 where it dropped a bit, then it rebounded. But we're now sort of comparable ratings where we were in '21, but you'll notice that the negative ratings are the highest they've ever been, at 36%. So that's about, you know, 31% in '21 was the last time we could find that. Still in that positive, right? But this is all sort of a symptom to me of Redmond urbanizing. There are more discussions to have that get more contentious. You had one when we were doing this at the time, right? So this is sort of the things that cities start to deal with as they urbanize, that stuff gets harder. The problems we're dealing with get more complex. There are more disagreements in town that are hard to resolve, right? Does this feel kind of like I'm on the right track here? So as you think about this, we're still in a net positive territory, which is a good place to be, but it does show you there is some sort of, what's the word I'm looking for? Is fatigue that we're looking at, and people saying, you know, I'm not really sure that this is what I want to be doing, right? And sort of negative feelings about the direction of the city. We also track this over time, and what you're going to see for all four of these that we're looking at, delivering services effectively, when we chart that on a bar chart, 63%, 25% this year is what we got for delivering services effectively, right? We're still positive ratings and generally consistent what we've seen in the past. Keeping community members informed has had some really big swings. We look at that over time. You can see back there in, you know, 2021, we saw that dip, and then a rebound, and then a dip again, back to where we are today at 51, 45. Focusing on priorities that matter, that has actually been sort of back and forth, negative, positive, since 2017, when before it was entirely positive, 58%. So now we're seeing back and forth happening there, to where we get a 48% negative. And the same thing happening in using tax laws responsibly. Very similar kind of graph, right? Positive for a while, and then kind of trading back and forth, positive and negative. So we're into this more complex Redmond now, and you're seeing the results here when we ask people some of these more detailed priorities. Okay. Moving on to more specific actual ratings of city services and functions. The first thing we do is to say to people, on this list of items, we're going to ask you to rate them on a mean scale of one to five, where one on the far end means not important at all, and five means extremely important. And I'm showing you a couple of different things on this slide. I'm showing you first the mean score on that five rating. The closer we get to five, the more important that item is, okay? So that's one way to look at this, is say the mean score down the middle, a three indicates the midpoint in this scale. So everything you're seeing here is seen as important, but clearly different grades of important, because the second way to look at is to say, how many people gave it a five? The percentage that actually gave it a five. In the far right, the extremely important, the people gave it a five. Protecting the quality of drinking water, 81% gave it a five. The next one down, ensuring adequate response times for fire and emergency medical services, 75% gave it a five. There's some really big differences when you look at it on the five scale, right? To get a sense of what percentage of people are giving it a five. And that's reflected in the mean score. So even though providing community events such as derby days, only I guess 19%, extremely important is a five, it's widely seen as important because it's still getting above a three on the mean score, right? It's just that most people are giving that like a three and a four instead of the 81% that are giving the top one and the second one, 85% of five. So this gives you a sense of the importance grades. These have remained relatively consistent over time. If you look at the mean scores and where they kind of go out and the percentages of five, you're going to see things like protecting drinking water quality, fire and police services, parks and open space and trails, all near the top of importance overall in the mean score ratings. What we do next is say, all right, well then, how are we doing on performance here? And what we're hoping is that we're going to find the things that are really important are the things we're doing really well on, right? That's the goal here. So overall, the mean score, if we take everything together and say, how are we doing overall? 3.5% is what we get, the satisfaction at 13%. So in this scale, the one is not satisfied at all, the five is very satisfied. So once again, we're looking for intensity. Where are the intense, very satisfied items? Ensuring adequate times for fire and emergency medical services, 33%, very satisfied. One of the top mean scores on this, you'll notice that as we go back and forth, right? The same score, like one-to-five scale, but all these are kind of lower when you look at that, right? In terms of performance, but still positive there for almost everything except for the one at the bottom. But as you move through the list, the very satisfied percentage, we're looking at, you know, 33 and almost half and 40% starts to drop into thirds and then 20%. And now we're into like the teens, the high teens, and some of these ones at the bottom. Still, all of them over three, right? Indicating that they're all positive on the performance rating. The one at the bottom there, utilizing community feedback on priorities and project decision-making. I wonder what could be driving that? Do you have any sense of it, right? Well, I think we know. We would go back to the beginning of the survey, what it was that was driving this question. We're talking about homelessness and housing, that's really, to me, what's probably driving this, why it's driving that number so low. What we do next is to try to match these two and say, all right, where we are doing, where stuff is really important and we're exceeding, we should be seeing those come out about comparable. So what we're looking for here is, the green ones are where our performance is exceeding how important the item is. So we're doing really well on derby days, but it's not as important, right? So we're doing a great job there. Same on providing recreation programs for the community, we're doing really well, but we're well exceeding the performance. We want to see this where our performance and importance are comparable to each other. That's this section in the middle. All those items are basically where we're doing just as well as important as they are. Does that make sense? So that's the second tier of these. And then the last tier, and this cut is a little harder to make, but you can see that we're getting to 79% in terms of the matching of these two. The last four items is where we're underperforming importance, right? So that's public infrastructure and facilities, managing pedestrian and bike safety, managing police services, and then utilizing community feedback on priority project decision-making. Those are the four that fall below that if we're making that cut. So if we're looking at this from a gap analysis perspective, we're trying to understand between 2013 and 2014, we did this same chart in 2013, in 2023 and 2024, sorry, and trying to compare these two and saying, what are the differences here? If you look at the differences, there's really almost none. We're talking about margin of error percentages on the far right. The net change is within four points except for one, right? Utilizing community feedback on priority project decision-making was at 76% in terms of a match last year, and it's at 66% this year. These are the kinds of things you're going to see happen when we have really difficult discussions in a city, right? You're going to see this kind of outcome later on. Okay, moving on, but I'm going to see if there's any questions before I do. We just covered a fair amount of stuff. No? Okay. We asked a specific section this year about public safety. So we asked a question here on an excellent, good, only fair, and poor scale, which you should be familiar with by now, because we've gone over it a couple of times. How would you rate the job that Redmond Fire is doing and the Redmond Police Department is doing? What we see kind of across the board, everywhere we ask this, firefighters always get a better rating. It's almost exclusively, the firefighters are going to get a positive rating here, but both are very positive. If you look at the total positive, 75% for Redmond Fire, 63% for Redmond Police, the intensity is a bit different. The excellent is basically double what it is for fire as it is for police. I think, you know, when we think about that, there are reasons for that. If you think about what's going on here, firemen come and save your house. They come and save you when there's a medical emergency. Police, we know there's more complex work going on here. We know that there is more challenging work going on. We've seen that in the last five years across the country, that it is more challenging work. Look at the only fair and poor ratings here, and you can see that there is some registering of that in the only fair and poor for the Redmond Police Department, almost non-existent for a fire department. So tracking this over time, you can see that the last time we asked this was actually in '22, and here's the comparison for both fire and police. Fire is on the, the '22 numbers are on the bottom, '24 on the top. So when we look at the changes here, the net positive for Redmond Fire is about the same, right? The positive may have changed a little bit at 78 in '22, total at 75% in '24, but really, the net negative changing, it hasn't changed at all in terms of the net positive. It did change a little bit for Redmond Fire, right, for Redmond Police at the bottom there. And if we're trying to dig into this, like what is it that's changing? You can see sort of small changes in almost every category. You can see that the excellent going down a couple of points, the goods going down a couple of points. The only fair stayed about the same, but the poor actually went up. That's where most of that change happened. There's still a significant proportion in both instances that are saying, I don't know how to rate that, which is really them saying, I haven't had that experience, I don't know what to say, right? They're basically passing on this. But still, when we think about it, a 63, 21, positive, negative rating is still a good place to be when we think about these services. So the next aspect of this we asked was about safety. So we asked two versions of this question here on the far left. In general, how safe do you feel in Redmond? On the right, how safe do you feel walking alone in your neighborhood? Both of these very safe ratings come across the board, not a big difference between '23 and '24. The total safe numbers look virtually identical. There are some small shifts there when you look at the very safe, right? If you look at how you see, how safe do you feel in Redmond? A slight decline in the very safe there. You can see it going from 40 to 32. So we talk about intensity, right? That's where the intensity changed a little bit. Doesn't really change at all when you're walking alone in your neighborhood. You can see those that are pretty consistent. So Redmond as a whole, and I mentioned the word urbanizing, right? This is where we're seeing this coming up again, where that's sort of a small decline. Still, almost universally safe, about 14% saying unsafe there on the city of Redmond itself, but the vast majority are saying they feel totally safe in the city. So the next scale, we asked this on a scale of five, where one means not important at all, and five means extremely important. I'm showing you the fours and fives, right? So three would be the midpoint here on the scale. And we asked people to say, all right, what are these public safety resources? How important are each of the following items to you and your household? Increasing public safety resources overall, 67% total important, 39% rated at a five. So as we think about this, right, if you expected safety, if crime was the biggest concern, you might have expected increasing public safety resources to be more like 50-something percent, right? It's 39% right now. So it gives you a sense that this general feeling of safety may not be coming home to say, well, we really have to put more money into police services. It's more like, kind of the world at large feels unsafe, the urban area of King County, Seattle's kind of feeling unsafe, and is it coming our way, right? That's kind of what this feels like to me, when we look at this. We started digging a little bit more. You can see, we asked also some specific items, providing crisis response.
Just a moment.
Of course.
I think we lost the sound a moment ago.
My light turned green. Is that a good thing or a bad thing? It was off a minute ago.
Yeah, it might be a problem. Somehow the, everyone who's on team suddenly can't hear.
Okay. Have to figure out where we lost it, so I can roll back.
I think it was about one minute ago.
We'll just redo the slide then. Do we need to use a different mic? I can move if you want.
Can you hear us now?
Looks like the closed captioning is working.
Okay, good, they said. Okay, so maybe if you want to go.
Sure.
Back, just to the, maybe the point about increasing public safety resources overall.
Yes.
Great, thanks.
Okay, so we were talking about this at the beginning of the survey. Remember, one of the open ends was crime was increasing. So the question you might say to yourself, well, if crime is increasing, I might have expected the extremely important here on the increasing public safety resources overall to be higher than 39% at a five, right? But remember, crime only registered probably the third or fourth item on the whole list. There's a whole bunch of people in Redmond who are not worried about this at all, did not mention it as the top concern. So let's make sure we connect those two dots, that yes, there is, there is some growing concern, but it's not universal across the city. As we dig into this a little bit further, though, you look at some of the items we asked, the next one, providing crisis response to 911 calls and behavioral and mental health specialists. That one came out at 71% important, 47% extremely important. So there are some nuances within this question of public safety resources that we could be talking about. As you move down the list there, you can see the next two items also getting into a majority saying important, but the percentages giving it a five are dropping off into the thirds or so, right? Helping community members experiencing homelessness on a path towards stability, 57% total, 37% extremely important. The next one, almost the same in terms of five percentage of 36% for providing resources and services to mobile health programs to vulnerable residents who frequently use extra support, which frees up 911 to handle other emergencies. But that total importance gets at 64%. So we're, we're dealing with intensities here and thinking about what kind of resources we could, we could be talking about. The next three all drop below 50% total importance. It's still important to somebody, but not the same degree as the other three that are on this, on their, on this chart. So hopefully this gives you a sense of the kinds of things people are talking about. And I really want to connect for you that original open end that we talked about, which was about 12, what was the, the crime number? One of you is going to remember exactly, but I will go back quickly and look. In that open end, right, crime got to 15% in 2024, right? And so I just want, I want you to keep that in mind, that although there may be some concerns here, it's still 15% that mention it when we gave them an open-ended response. It said crime is a big concern, and then when it starts to come out here, what resources do we be talking about? It does sort of lean towards more of the specialized as opposed to resources overall.
Quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. On that open-ended response, were folks able to only answer with one answer? Could they only say crime? Okay.
I, you know, the coding is not on here. We typically try to do this as a single category to get the, the, the primary response. But remember, we also have two ways to talk about this. We also say then, what's your number one priority? And that's where crime came out more, right?
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
If you're taking questions, like, if not, I can wait.
Well, how, how close are we to the end? I want to make sure if you have a kind of.
I think we have three or four slides.
Okay.
This was about the, specifically for public safety. I was just wondering if there's a map for the areas where people have concern. I'm curious if it's around their home, or if it's certain parts of the city that's not their home, just to understand kind of what that safety.
You mean this one?
Yeah.
So this is not done at any specific, because the questions are, how do you safety feel in the city?
Right.
How safety feel walking alone in your neighborhood? We wouldn't be able to really pull out the unsafe. The unsafe, in my, my recollection, is more of a demographic than it is a specific area.
Great, that makes, that makes sense, thank you. And then it would be really interesting for us as a council to take a look at this with our public safety dashboard and try and understand there's specific areas and we have some investments to make. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, well, let's, let's finish up and then we'll, we'll get to, I'm sure, lots of good questions.
So we did actually ask some of these questions in '23, wanted to show you what was happening here. Some of these actually registered more importance than in 2023. So that providing crisis response to 911 calls, that extremely important is up from 38% at five in 2023, it's 47% now. And there's one other one that's up, that's the third one down, providing resources and services to the mobile health program. That was 27% of five, 36% now. The other ones stayed either, they went down a little bit, although their, their, their five percentage stayed about the same. So you're getting a sense of that intensity now, what's changed between '23 and '24. Okay, I was even two slides away. So just to sum things up, we saw some great quality life numbers that have really remained consistently positive over time. The city's still getting really good ratings for its core responsibilities, and we talked about that overall, how is Redmond doing? Still really positive. When you start to dig into it, though, we did see some ratings drops, and I think there are some reasons for that, which you experienced at, at city council chambers, I'm sure, when you're, when you're dealing with difficult issues. The ratings for most of what we saw remain consistent with one exception, that one about prioritizing the issues we talked about. We did see concern around crime increasing sort of every year. We've seen it, it's now one of the top issues the city wants to face, especially when you ask it about spending priorities. When you ask it the other way, it's the most important problem, they've registered about third or fourth on the list of items. But when we talk about money being spent, it was the top, although again, that was still a quarter that said that, right? There's plenty of other priorities people are worried about. And then finally, the vast majority of people see Redmond as a safe place to live, but there are improvements that we talked about in public safety that could be made, that you saw there a few minutes ago, specifically in kind of a specialized version of taking care of public safety issues. That's all I wanted to cover. We do have one other slide that I have in my back pocket, but we'll see if we want to get to that after questions.
Sounds good. Other questions from the council? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you so much for being here. Always look forward to this presentation, and it's always great to, to get a pulse. Director Maher, I know you started the, opened the conversation by saying any staff recommendations coming out of the results or inspired by these results would come in the budget, but I, that is one of my burning questions. So I have, I have a question for the council and the mayor, and, and what that means for, what all of this means for our team, who is responsible for so much community outreach and listening. But also, I, I see in the nuances here, a, a real role on improved communications and more comprehensive communications. Take, for instance, crime growing as a concern at the time when we know that crime isn't actually growing in our city. We just had a quarterly report on that last week, so I'm seeing a disconnect there, and I'm wondering, maybe if you're not ready for airtime on some specifics, but how are you thinking and absorbing the information in these results and other things going on in the city?
So specifically, I think addressing the outreach and engagement has been on council's mind and been a consistent conversation over the last couple of budget cycles. So I believe in the budget, you will see that addressed as far as capacity, what that looks like. So there was an FTE polled, I think Vice President Forsyth acknowledged this a couple of committee meetings ago. There was an FTE polled a few years ago, maybe two or three budget cycles, that did just the outreach and engagement. So that has been down a little bit. I, I do believe that the specifics that were going on around the time of this really affect that question of using feedback for decision making. So I think that's specific to what we've seen it kind of change when we've had different projects or programs like that, that require a lot of city community member feedback. I think at also looking at the other different ways we can reach people that we're not reaching currently is something that we need to dig a little deeper on as well. I think by utilizing some community partners that we maybe haven't utilized in the past, even on things like this, where we offer in multiple languages, but we don't see a response, I still think we need to look at how we get to the people that we're not consistently hearing from, so.
Can I, can I add to that from the survey results? Part of this is not something Redmond can do anything about, because there are concerns about crime that are nationwide. The nation feels less safe. So we're not, we're not just seeing it in Redmond, we're seeing it sort of everywhere that people, especially at the time of the survey, that people feel less safe generally. And so there's only so much the city can do about addressing that. It's not to say that you can't do something, you definitely should.
Sure, absolutely. And thank you, Lisa, and with due respect, I appreciate that, and, and I heard you kind of raise the question of like, is a C good enough in government? There's not a lot of folks around this table that are really satisfied with Cs, so we're going to do everything that we can to, to do the best job that we can, right? So yeah, I know we have the, the council conversation coming up in September. Hopefully, we're going to get those quarterly events going through, getting scheduled throughout. I appreciate the, your remarks, Lisa, about where you're kind of headed and things you're thinking about. I'm glad you're thinking about all of those things as a team. And it really makes me think, you know, again, you've heard in my ombudaries reports the last few weeks, last few business meetings, that really, this has been the thing that people have been asking for. At Derby Days, people are like, hey, when's the next town hall? Like, assuming that we have those scheduled. I think there's a real interest in, in hearing from the community more, and there are some topics in here. Take, for instance, crime. I could see a community event where a few different slides are shared, maybe about not only this information here on, on the perception of crime, but also the reality of our crime, and then have a listening session and hear from the community about like, what would these investments, you all responded in this really high way that you want to see more of this, what would that look like? Currently, the council, we have authorized these two subcommittees that are, that are studying different pieces of this, and it's been a while since we have more formally asked for the public's feedback on what that would look like a little bit more. So what I really see coming out of here, and I'll wrap up my comments, is a need for the council and the mayor to be out there together, asking the community for more feedback, and asking the community to join in more opportunities to hear what's on their minds. So, thanks.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. My, a lot of my comments, or my question was also in alignment with Councilmember Stewart about, clearly, crime is, is, is on the minds of the residents, whether they, they feel that they're overall safe, but they're, they've got concerns about crime, and, and there, and then the communication about the actuality of where our crime levels are. So definitely, crime is, again, top of mind. I thought it was interesting that while, while crime is on top of mind, that so many of our residents feel safe. And again, in alignment with Councilmember Stewart's comment about, you know, a C-level government, a C grade just isn't good enough for us around, around this particular table. You know, I'm still sitting here with the fact that 10% of our residents, and if we're looking at a, a sample base of, let's call it 550 from this survey, so 55 of those people feel completely unsafe. To me, this, this is, this doesn't sit well with me at all. And if we think that, okay, well, if that's 10% of the overall, if we believe that the 550 is a crosscut of the, say, upwards of 80,000, then that's 8,000 people in my city that do completely feel unsafe. Understanding that it's a demographic, I'd like to, to find out more about like, who the, the demographic that, that this is representational of, so that, you know, I mean, 10% of people, that's, that's, that's still a lot. And I had another note, and unfortunately, I can't read my own writing right now, but if it comes to me, I'll, I'll, I'll email about it. Thank you.
We can always loop back for a second round of questions if it comes to you. Councilmember Forsyth?
Thank you. Following up on the demographics comment from Councilmember Nueva Camina, so we have 99% that took the survey in English. Do we have further breakdowns of, was that English as a second language? Do we know demographics of male, female, non-binary? Do we know any of that information?
We have, we have all that information.
Okay, great. So, so we're pretty solid that it was a good crosscut, even though the majority took it in English?
Yes. We don't have ESL, we don't, want to ask that question about which language I think you're speaking in, but I have to get the top lines out to check. But we do have all the information.
Maybe something we add in the future is if English is a second language, so that we, we understand actually who is, who is participating, because that's a, that's a big section of our community. Was really interested to see the drinking water protection was a high priority, and that's really exciting since we're, we have a policy in the works right now to protect our groundwater, so that made me very happy to see that. And then last question is on the survey results. Was this information previewed by the director's staff and the mayor prior to it coming to council?
I believe the mayor and the CEO have seen Ian's presentation, but I do not believe it has been shared out with the directors or the community yet.
Okay, so this is pretty much the first time that everybody is seeing it.
Correct.
And it was just an initial touch point. Just, just checking to see if any information maybe fell off, or if this is just the straight-up presentation that was.
This is the straight-up presentation we received.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fields?
A couple of things. The, the overall trend, I appreciate what you're saying, that it's still net positive, but, but a trend over time at a high-level survey like this, it, to me, is concerning. A, a trend where it's trending negative in that they don't believe that we're doing the best we can. I, I think surveys like this tend to bring out people wanting to be positive about their city and about their community, so I don't necessarily share the optimism that that's not something we should be concerned about. With respect to perception, and, and I appreciate what the council members have said, Councilmember Stewart drawing the, sort of the, what do you call that? The, the lack of consistency between actual crime rate presented to us by our police chief and what people are feeling also within this report. Is there, one of the things, one of the key things that have changed over the past four or five years is we don't have any local media any longer. We used to have Redmond Reporter, before that, we had Something Journal, now we have Nextdoor and whatever the other one is, and it's pretty alarmist. I don't necessarily go on it, but people always tell me, did you see this thing on Nextdoor? Crime is terrible in Redmond. So, and I'm, I'm a little bit skeptical that we can fill the gap as city government. I think we, we can certainly do better. But is there any analysis or any thoughts or any comparisons to other communities that do have a, a more formal local media about people feeling informed and people feeling trusting of the information they're getting?
Many of the Puget Sound cities that are not Seattle have also lost their media. So we don't have great parallels to, to say what's happening there, but there certainly is a big gap in connections between city government and what citizens understand about what's happening in the city government for that reason. So you're not alone in that.
Yeah.
But what you, I think, what I do notice in here is, this is not the first time I've been in this, in this space, and we've talked about a big change year to year. These things do have a, a way of recovering. They did in the past. I can't guarantee you that will again. But you saw the same drop happen when you had last had a contentious issue. I think, I don't exactly, someone's going to have to remember, but I think it was more council-driven at that time, that the council didn't get along as well. I may be misremembering, so forgive me if I'm wrong. We saw that in the results, and then things changed, and before you knew it, the results were back again. So it, you know, I, I'm not saying to you that will, they will come back, but these things do, especially since we do it year by year, they do have a, a way of lingering, especially when we did the survey right on top of the rest of these contentious issues that were happening. So, I mean, one part of me says, wait till next year, see if it changes. And also, this question of, you know, will, will things feel different in 2025 than they do right now? We've been entering a, coming out a big process of inflationary concerns, lots of sort of concerns about violence generally in the country, that have felt, as you just said, nationalist statistics are going the other direction. They're actually going in a positive direction. So how long will that take to catch up, and will it? Those are all big questions that I can answer, but they would suggest, they've had them before, and then things tend to go up. We've been, sorry, just one more thing. The right direction, wrong track numbers we've seen in Puget Sound have been really bad for a long time, and that's just optimism generally, not anything else specifically. They're slowly increasing. And will they continue, if they continue that, then we might be back in a territory where, where people are feeling good about things generally in Puget Sound and their hometowns.
Yeah, and I appreciate what you're saying. I guess the, the, the question for us is, especially with the budget coming up, as pointed out, that there will be, this will in fact inform budget proposals. But I think the, the question that we on council and council with the mayor need to wrestle with is how do we, how do we improve that? We can communicate all day long, but we have to be believed, we have to be credible, and I think that's, for me, that's the key here is, I'm not asking you, I'm, I'm more pontificating. But we need to find a way to, as Councilmember Stewart said, listen and not just talk. So, thank you.
Councilmember Salahuddin?
Thank you. And I, I just want to first echo everything that Councilmember Fields just mentioned, which echoed Councilmember Stewart. So, yeah, making sure that we're listening is, is very important, and that touches base on, I'm sort of the slide that talks about the information sources and sort of the ways that we're getting to community members. A lot of word of mouth and that net change is, is very significant when I, when I see it, and how folks are getting information, and, you know, when we have sort of, I see the community and neighborhood association meetings, although that's, you know, within community, that's still about double city meetings or open houses, and having, you know, community organized.
Councilmember Salahuddin, it looks like they lost sound online again.
I will wait. Yeah.
I know, I don't want any good point to be missed here.
Oh, yeah, exactly. It is double. It is double, yeah.
Okay, is it working now? We'll see.
Perfect.
This is, this is working, oh, I think I just saw a thumbs up. Okay, got it.
Great.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just touch base on sort of the information sources and the slide showing, you know, word of mouth being the highest information source for folks, and that increasing from 23 to 24 by 10 percentage points. But when we look down to the sort of community and neighborhood association meetings, that's communities organizing themselves and getting information from, you know, their own entities, and seeing that higher than city meetings and city open houses, I think it's just sort of a conversation amongst ourselves of being more intentional, having those listening sessions, and, and getting out in community a little bit more. I do want to also echo, there's, just jumping around here, the slide of the top-of-mind concerns. We're focused a lot on crime, there's a lot of really good information on, you know, residents' focus on crime, but here we do still see that the affordable housing cost of living and taxes is the highest top-of-mind concern, and when we look at the percentage change between 2019 and 2024, I think it's the largest percent change, 15%. And so it's, it's something that, you know, I think council is tackling and doing a great job at investing resources, but, you know, how do we make sure that we're, we're really targeting this top-of-mind concern and listening to, to residents? Because in this conversation right here, a lot of our focus has been crime, and so when residents feel like we're not listening to the concerns, using this survey for face value and really going top-down in what we discuss as council, with staff, with leadership, I think it's really important to see this. And finally, one last thing, just to echo what Councilmember Anderson mentioned on the slide that talks about the safety in Redmond, the neighborhoods, looking at, and I don't know if this information is, is collected, and forgive me if, you know, this was addressed when Councilmember Anderson asked a question about specific neighborhoods. I think it's comparing the, how safe do you feel in Redmond?
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
Yeah, right there. We're really heavily focused on growing these, these urban cores, our downtown, Overlake, Marymore Village. If we have sort of a gauge of when you, when we're asking the question, how safe do you feel walking in your neighborhood, and we can really clearly identify those with relation to our crime data on where crimes are happening, is this something that we can address with, say, a pop-up station or something that, you know, we've already put forward, but maybe there's a different location because of where folks are really addressing their crime concerns? So just some thoughts there. So just some thoughts there. Thank you so much for doing this.
I'm glad you brought us back to the slide, so I want to make sure I correct something here. These, the total unsafe is comprised of very and somewhat unsafe, right? And so the very unsafe in the category for 2024 for, in the city is 3%. On the very unsafe in your neighborhood is 2%. I want to make sure I didn't leave you with the impression that that was all very unsafe.
Thank you. I'm not seeing hands up, so I'm gonna jump in with my questions and comments. I actually will just jump right on what Councilmember Salahuddin was talking about around, around the results on housing and seeing that actually as the top-of-mind concerns. I think it definitely is notable where we've seen the changes. But also, as you mentioned, some of the discussion going on in our city is around affordable housing, right? And that was, that was what this was about. And so it is interesting, both that paired with 57% in the, I'm thinking about public safety resources, noting helping community members experiencing homelessness on a path towards stability. I mean, that was one of the top four things, higher than increasing number of police officers or firefighters for our residents. So it is interesting just to see that there's a lot of, a majority of residents really interested or of these respondents interested in increasing homelessness services and increasing affordable housing and addressing cost of living for people who are having challenges. While also, you know, obviously there's, you know, a lot of, of kind of discussion around these, these topics as well. So I just kind of wanted to call out that trend, which is, is interesting. And to Councilmember Salahuddin's point is one that we're looking at and per the rest of the conversation on, you know, how do we message out to folks about, we hear you on your interest in seeing these types of things, and this is how the decisions we're making are actually the data-informed way to address those issues. And I think to the earlier discussions from several council members, I'm feeling very inspired by this to go out and have hopefully one of our first community conversations soon. I did miss the last committee meeting where we were discussing this topic, so maybe at the end here or at council talk time, we can loop back to just confirm if, on the path forward for getting out this fall into community, because I'm hearing, or actually, we could do it even now if there's interest in just, in just confirming that we should go ahead and schedule that meeting for the fall. That, that is specifically where, you know, the community knows that the council is actually saying, come talk to us. Not necessarily we're tabling at an event, but we actually are gonna have a meet your council and talk with them about the issues event. And then I think in January, as Councilmember Field's brought up, you know, the importance of hopefully having a town hall-style event. So we give the public a lot of different ways to engage with us, you know, over, over time, I think is gonna be really important. The only other thing I'll add here, just on thinking about how we reach residents, since we all have been digging in on this, that I would say for the budget process is important is certainly us figuring out how do we reach better, since clearly that's like pretty low on the list of how people feel how accessible that is. But we also might want to double down on the things that people consistently are using the most. So I know in the past we've talked about, we had reduced some of the runs of the focus newsletter and we increased that, but if we're seeing that the print newsletter and the utility mailings are effective and, you know, the website, for the website actually being a high one that people are using, you know, do we think within budget about how we make that even more navigable? Do we think about how we might, what other types of print things we might provide if that turns out that that's actually the, one of the best ways to get people to learn about what the city's up to? So those are just a couple, mostly reflections, since everyone asked all the good questions. Are there any questions, other questions? Councilmember Salahuddin?
Just a really small clarification. On the presentation, it says that there was a total of 547 interviews, and in the memo it says 572 responses. I just wanted to clarify what the total N size.
My top lines say 547 as well, so that seems like it's the right number.
Awesome, thank you.
Where's the 572 that you're seeing?
It's in, in our memo.
Okay.
Might have been my mistake.
That 572 is 2023, so that's probably where that came from.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, just, you know, again, for council, so three of us are serving on a subcommittee on funding public safety, of which I see some calls to do more of that in these results. Also, a few of us serving on the alternative crisis response subcommittee, which I also see this calling for more of. So this seems to me a very timely tool in, in helping both of those committees. So just super timely on that. And in terms of budget, thanks.
Thank you. And I think to your earlier point about the time in which this was conducted, it will be really interesting to see the results next year and just kind of continue to track over time to just see how this, this changes. But definitely great conversation tonight about how we can take these results and continue to respond to what our community is telling us. I'm not seeing any other questions here, hands raised. So if there are no other questions, then we'll say thank you very much, and we'll close out this item. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the police technology update and proposed commerce grant award. And we have our police chief, Daryl Lowe, here to introduce this item. Welcome, Chief Lowe. We'll let Chief Lowe get, get himself set up here.
Good evening, Daryl Lowe, your police chief. For this particular presentation, I'll take council's direction as where, as to where you want to go or start, if we want to review the draft policy, if we want to talk about the grant and/or if you want to talk about the technology, I'll say in general.
Maybe you can give an overview, just for the listening public, if they didn't listen in on our committee meeting, just a brief one, and then we can jump into council member questions. I think, you know, there were some questions about the Flock technology, but also some, I think the policy would be one, where there's probably gonna be some questions on it. And maybe you can, in your overview, you can just highlight some of the pieces on the draft policy. And if possible, maybe we could have someone available to screen share the policy when we discuss it.
Good. So in June, at a study session, I brought forward a number of law enforcement-related technologies that I have an interest in bringing online at various points in time. We had a discussion in regards to an overlay for our CAD and RMS system that will basically correlate and bring all of our data forward as we get calls for service. That technology was approved, that contract was approved, and we're moving forward with that and look to have that online probably by late September, early October. One of the other technologies that we spoke about were automatic license plate readers. We discussed automatic, fixed automated license plate readers, which is what this grant is and what Flock technology is. It's a fixed automatic license plate reader. We discussed the fact that our in-car cameras have the capability of having that technology activated, and so then that would provide automatic license plate reading from a mobile perspective. One of the other technologies that we had discussed was a video, I'll call it a coalescing system, which basically brings in multiple video feeds and sources from, from different, different types into a single location. That is something that we are looking into and may look to explore later in 2025 from the perspective of a real-time information center utilizing video that's available from a number of sources that currently exist right now within our, I'll call it, within our municipal infrastructure, that being the body worn cameras and car cameras, our city traffic cameras, et cetera. So that's kind of an overview of the, the previous conversation that we had as related to technology. From the automatic license plate reader conversation, we became aware of a grant that was available for this particular technology. Staff went forward with a application for that. We were awarded $94,968 from the Department of Commerce specifically around the implementation of the automatic license plate reading technology, and that's what brings us to this point today. If you'd like, I can go into Flock in particular, or I can take any questions that council may have at this time.
I think if you can continue on and share a little bit more about Flock in particular. Also, I don't think you shared this Flock PowerPoint in the committee, but you may not need to go through the whole thing, but some of the, the top points would be great. Thanks.
Okay. So Flock technology is essentially a fixed license plate reading technology. It is affixed to either city infrastructure, i.e. light pole or power pole, or it can be installed on a standalone pole. It provides information from a fixed location from a technology perspective. It is CEGIS compliant, which is our criminal justice information center or information system compliant. The information that is captured is not retained for more than 30 days. As a matter of fact, it is automatically deleted at 30 days. The information is not shared outside of, I'll say, our system. It's not shared with third parties. The information that is captured is not personally identifying information. It is a license plate and I'll call it vehicle description. So it takes essentially a picture of a license plate and the fender of a car, and it recognizes that that is a, you know, a red Honda Accord. That information is only searchable based upon a call for service or an investigation. So it's not just randomly searchable by, you know, police personnel. It has to be tied to a specific call or a specific investigation. One of the benefits of it is, is that it can be tied in with stolen vehicles or what's referred to in the packet as a hot sheet. So basically, information that, I'll say is relevant to law enforcement, a stolen car, amber alert, a silver alert, that type of information. So if one of those vehicles that is in that system passes by one of these fixed locations, our dispatch center officers will get an alert that says this silver alert vehicle was at intersection X and Y. From a law enforcement and from a crime and safety perspective, if we get a hit that says a stolen vehicle just, you know, came into the city of Redmond, at that point, our officers will get notified. We can actually go to that area and attempt to either apprehend that vehicle or prevent a crime. I'll use a specific example that happened here in Redmond a couple months ago. As we're all aware, we had one of our local cannabis dispensaries burglarized on two separate occasions. The individuals that came into town were in stolen vehicles. With this technology, had they passed a fixed location, we would have gotten an alert that this vehicle is now in this location. We could then respond to that location and perhaps, you know, prevent a crime. From another, I'll just call it a humanistic or human perspective, if we had a missing individual that was, you know, driving a car, while they may not qualify for a silver alert through the state, they have very specific criteria, we could take that information, put it into our system, and once again, you know, if that vehicle passes by one of those locations, we would be notified and then we could go, you know, and potentially reunite that person, you know, with their family. So it's not just, you know, I'll say, a crime and law enforcement fighting aspect. It does have other, you know, aspects to it. In your packet, there were a couple examples of an abducted child that was reunited with their family members in a shorter period of time because of this type of technology. So it's just an additional tool to help us, you know, continue to keep the community safe. And I think the biggest points, the data is deleted every 30 days. You can only, you know, search to look at it for a legitimate reason tied to an investigation or an act of crime. No personally identifying information, no Department of Licensing information, so nothing personal comes of it. It is simply a data point, but it, it provides us, you know, I'll say, with good information and good follow-up.
Thank you. And I see, first question from Councilmember Nuava Kamina. Go ahead.
My question is, on the 30 days, I hear that continuing to come up. And why 30 days? And does, could that be shortened? So I think that the first question is, why, why 30 days?
30 days is, is the recommendation from the ACLU in part, as part of their suggested retention period and/or model policy. And within 30 days, if there were some, I'll say, value or viability from an investigative perspective, we should know or be made aware of it within that time period. Could it be shortened? Yes, it could be shortened, but consistently 30 days is the standard.
I would love to see that article that you're referring to, because I, actually, when I was looking at the ACLU site, that was the, the question that I, I walked away with, and they actually recommended the absolute shortest amount of time.
Good.
Chief, actually, could you share with us a little bit about the inputs into this data governance policy that's for us? Kind of, for example, you, you mentioned the ACLU as one of the providing model language. Can you share a little bit more about how you developed this document?
Yeah, so just looking at, I'll say, best practices, what exists within other departments. There are 48 other cities within the state of Washington that already have this technology up and available. Looking at that, looking at some of the most recent articles on the, on the ACLU Washington website as it relates to Seattle. Seattle is looking at this same technology, and those, those most recent articles had issue with the fact that they were looking at a 90-day retention period with they, which they felt was too long. And then just from the information also provided by Flock suggests that the 30-day timeframe, you know, is consistent. You know, could we do it for a shorter period of time? You know, yes, that is a possibility, and if that is, you know, I'll say, the deal breaker or maker, then that would be definitely something that we would consider. However, I think, you know, to stay consistent, you know, with, I'll say, current practices and given the fact that it is active in a number of other cities that surround us with no other problems or concerns, I don't know that we want to, I'll say, buck the trend in the other direction necessarily.
Thank you. Are there questions on the technology or the policy? Go ahead, Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I'm curious, moving toward a harm reduction strategy for community policing is, is community policing part of the scope of the police technology policy? And I just want to be reminded about this. Can you remind me?
So from a harm reduction perspective, yes, I believe that, you know, all of the technologies that we are evaluating and looking to bring onboard will assist us in, I'll say, keeping everybody safe, providing a higher level, level of safety. This year becomes an additional tool for us to use. This combined with, I'll say, the Star Chase technology that we already have available. And going back to that previous example, if we get notified that a stolen car is in a particular area, we can respond to that area. If one of the vehicles there is equipped with Star Chase, we can deploy the GPS tag and then, you know, let, let the vehicle do whatever it's going to do, but then still be able to, to monitor it. But this year, I would think of it as a potential early warning system or early warning device for us, because, you know, staffing is and will remain an issue, you know, for a period of time. So we can't, you know, be, be all places. But at least with this particular technology in place, again, this gives us a heads up to say that, you know, here's a car that's already been identified by another law enforcement agency or even perhaps by this agency that is now in this area. So then we now can send resources there where we may otherwise, you know, not be there. And then again, I think the best example is, is, you know, our dispensary robbery. You know, that, in, in all likelihood, could have been either prevented or interrupted had we known that those individuals were there, you know, prior to the act or crime occurring.
A quick follow-up, if that's okay? So the context of my question was the group of young folks who came to get recognized a couple of weeks ago, and that's not necessarily part of the community policing program, but clearly a part of a recruitment strategy for the police department. And I was curious if we would be extending this policy to cover the volunteers as well and making sure that they're participating in? I'm just curious if you can talk a little bit about that.
Okay, now I think I'm a little confused. So the cadets or explorers that we had here?
Would they be subject to that data policy for the police technology policy?
I'm not understanding the context of, would they be subject to?
Do they get to use the cool stuff too, or what?
Oh, no. So, oh, okay, yeah, so no, this would be strictly for commissioned law enforcement officers. So the, the cadets would not have access to this information because they don't do follow-up, you know, for investigations or anything like that.
Got it. Thank you.
Now, if they're on a ride-along, yes, they could see, you know, the, the cool stuff or the technology in play, but they would not have access to it.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. Thank you so much for providing us the policy. I really appreciated reading and looking through it. It will not surprise you that I have multiple questions that I will follow up with you after this, because otherwise we'd probably be here all night. But just a couple of quick questions that we can talk about here. The example that you gave about the stolen car, it was my understanding that, like Kirkland has a different system than we have. How do those systems talk across the region?
So depending on what system you're talking about, so if we're talking like the computer rated dispatch system, yes, that could be a different system, and a records management system. So those are typically the systems that may differ from agency to agency. Some agencies in the region have the, the same system, so like their records management system, so that their reports and that type of information can talk better. This year, I'll say, if we take it up a level or a layer, so when it comes to stolen vehicles, that is a national. that is a national system and index, and then that is essentially managed or overseen by the Washington State Patrol. And then, like statewide information or national information actually comes from the FBI through State Patrol, and all law enforcement agencies have access to that information. And then from just a very basic, like radio communication perspective, we're all in a countywide system, so we can communicate via our portable radios across each agency. So probably the only difference would be from a records management system. So reports and those types of things may not be instantly available, but that information can be exchanged. And then consistently, if there are, you know, wanted individuals or wanted vehicles, that those bulletins and information are changed almost on a daily basis.
Okay, so a lot of that information is being shared regionally pretty much daily as far as, you know, missing persons, Silver Alert, that may be something that doesn't quite rise to a Silver, Silver, Silver Alert, but that local agencies should keep an eye out for, is, is part of your daily workflow already?
Yes. And if, if a significant event occurs in one of the jurisdictions, then our dispatch center would call NORCOM, or we would call over to Kirkland, Bellevue, et cetera, to give them the information. And then they would put a information call on their screen, so we would know that a crime occurred in Kirkland, and here's the vehicle description, just in case, you know, they traverse or come into the city of Redmond. So that communication occurs already.
Okay, great. And then, since these are going to be cameras mounted on public utility probably, what is the, what happens if there's a data breach? We're constantly faced with data breaches every day in our normal lives? And so what happens if these are tapped into? How are we protecting the community?
So from this, it has no publicly identifying information. So yes, there would be a license plate. So the license plate information, I guess arguably could be breached, but this, this particular system is on the AWS secure, you know, government system like most of our other systems are. So the, the security things are in place, the encryption is in place. And then from the other perspective of, the data gets deleted, so it's on a, that physical device, it gets uploaded to the cloud, which is, you know, that secure environment. So it would be just like any other, I guess, data breach if it were to occur, you know, we would get notified, we have the systems and things in place, we have the insurance in place. But the data that's contained there is, again, just a license plate, not personally identifiable, you know, information.
Would the people with those license plates in that 30-day period be notified, or?
For a data breach, yes. But the fact that their license plate was captured by one of the cameras, no, because it would be, I'll say, noticed there that this area is under video surveillance. So this is not, the best way I can describe it, I'm not trying to play peek-a-boo. What I'm trying to do is let individuals know that, you know, we do have this technology. It is there, because what I want to do is to deter individuals from coming to Redmond and committing crime. So it's not about Ms. Johnson, you know, passing the intersection on the way to the, you know, to the store, to the movies, et cetera. It's that if we have a crime that occurs, or if we have a vehicle that is described in that particular area, we now can then go back and look and see, and then that gives us, you know, I'll say, a clue or information to follow up on. Or, again, if that, you know, suspect vehicle comes into our jurisdiction, we get notified ahead of time, so we can send the resources to that area to either apprehend them or for sure prevent them from, you know, committing crime here in Redmond.
Okay, thank you. And I will follow up with you to clarify my ambiguities in the proposed language. Thanks.
Councilmember, I'll go, actually, Councilmember Stewart, then Councilmember Nueva Camina. I see you have a second question.
Yeah, thank you. I just noticed the Director Marchand is in the room, actually. So I wonder, could we invite, are you here for this conversation? Well, I'd love to have you, I would love to have you at the table if this is why you're here. So while Director Marchand makes his way, we do have a proposed new draft policy from the chief on this, which is something that, you know, we, the council, have been saying. It's, it's difficult to evaluate individual pieces of technology if we don't have guiding principles related to, to all the data yet. So Director Marchand, can you speak to kind of your involvement in any of the drafts we received today, or how you're thinking about some of the work you have ahead? And just would love to hear your take on it. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, absolutely. So Chief Lowe did forward us the, the draft policy that, that was presented to council today, and we've gone through and reviewed it. It's absolutely, you know, based on the review of my staff. It's a, it's perfectly solid draft policy for, for the purpose of these platforms that Chief Lowe's looking at. We probably, we're still, as I mentioned before, we're in the process of building a sort of overarching data governance policy for the city. And I would imagine that this technology and all the others would roll up into that one once it's developed.
Thank you.
Feel free to stick around, in case there's questions for you. Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. My question was around hearing Chief Lowe and understanding his sentiment about not wanting to play peek-a-boo. And it was a point that I had brought up on, on another instance where that may not be his intention, but what policy, you know, do we have that covered in a policy to where should anything ever happen to Chief Lowe or just tenured out, that, that that is protected? And then also taking a look at more in-depth around data sharing. As soon as, as I hear, well, we're, we're looking for something that's a crime, if we look back in, in our history, there were some, some, some things that were crimes that never should have been a crime, you know? So it's like, well, how then can we protect our residents from things that shouldn't necessarily be a crime? And I know, like, right now in our state, where we protect things, you know, however there's, there are some states where they, they could use this to enforce anti-abortion or anti-immigrant laws from other jurisdictions. And taking a look at, okay, well, what is our data sharing policy on, on issues like that? Not just about, you know, the crimes of, you know, somebody stealing a, a car, actually several people stealing cars and hitting a particular retailer, but even more on a larger scale? And what can we do to, to give our residents peace of mind?
So we don't share our, our information with third parties. So if there were going to be information sharing, it would be with another law enforcement entity. And I think that that, that is a reasonable expectation. So, you know, we're not going to, again, it doesn't get sold or shared with, you know, anyone outside of law enforcement. So I think that's the, the best assurance that, you know, I can provide for our community that if it's not enumerated in the policy, I will make sure that that, you know, is part of the policy. And then, as the IT director said, once the city's, you know, data governance policy and everything comes out, our policy will, I'll say, will either sunset or will reference the city's policy, because the city's policy will, you know, take precedent over individual department policy. But it was made very clear to me that, you know, in order to move this forward, that a draft policy was necessary. So that, that is what, you know, I and my staff worked on to, to come forward with it, you know, working in conjunction with the IT department to ensure that what we brought forward as a draft was not going to be in, in conflict or contradiction to the direction that the, the city is already going.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Thank you, Chief Lowe. So you are a cop, and as a cop, you're, one of your driving forces is to make sure that people are not victimized by criminals. You, you've said that, and we're glad of it. You're also a police chief, and I think you're connected to a lot of different organizations around the state. So, so you're in a unique role. And I think you're the best person to tell us some of the things we're trying to get at. Yes, we certainly see the advantages of either preventing crime or catching people who commit crimes, which then in effect prevents crime. But there's, I think that there's a fear or a potential that this technology can be used either in a biased way, or in an unfair way, or perhaps sort of that slippery slope concept of more and more and more intruding on people and intruding on their rights. I'm sure you've thought about this second thing that council is trying to get at. Can you just give us any insight as to what, what you were concerned about, or what you might be concerned about, and why you didn't rest on, you know, that's, that this policy does in fact protect people's rights and us from, or not, well, yeah, from government enforcing in a biased way or in an unfair way?
So the technology in and of itself is, this particular technology is, I'll say, incapable of bias. This technology records a data point of a vehicle that passes by a fixed location. It does not capture any information about who is in the vehicle, so it can't be utilized for that purpose. The policy around us being able to even go back and look to see what information we have has to be tied to a specific crime or specific investigation. And it was pointed out that, yeah, things were crimes that should have never been crimes, but right, wrong, or indifferent, you know, we are tasked with enforcing the, the laws that are on the books. So if it is, you know, in the RCW as a crime, and we've seen over the last three years, there's been a number of things that have changed as it relates to the law and what, what is, and I'll say, is and is not a crime, or, and so we've seen that. So I don't think it fair to try and put this technology into that conversation, because just by the fact of how it works, it can't be biased, because it doesn't know who's driving the car, whatever, it just knows that a car passed by this location. I think the policy has the right guardrails and framework in place for us, for the humans that says, okay, if you're going to go back and look, it has to be tied to something. And just like all the other systems that we have, this will become part of our annual auditing process. This particular technology has a portal that's available, so we, if we are able to move forward with this, we will be able to then create a forward-facing portal so that, you know, anyone and everyone can see, you know, who searched it, how many times it was searched. So there are checks and balances in there to ensure that we, you know, the, the police, the people behind it, don't in fact violate, you know, people's rights. I'm familiar with the concern that council member brought up as far as, you know, you know, other states that may have different laws and those types of things. But I guess my practical approach to that would be, you know, if an individual with a Washington license plate showed up in another one of these states, they wouldn't have to go back to this technology, because the license plate is going to say where they're from. So I, I've seen that argument, that, that argument is on the ACLU's website, and I'll just say that, that, that is a perspective, but I, I don't see the application to this and to us. Because even if another law enforcement agency from another state reached out, they would have to have a legitimate reason, it would have to be tied to a case or an investigation for us to, to release that information. So we would not just, you know, randomly or willy-nilly participate in another department or another state's, you know, fishing expedition or whatnot.
Thank you.
Councilmember Salah Hadeen?
Yeah, thank you so much. And I just want to say, I really appreciate the data governance policy and the work that we're doing to, to make sure that we have that laid out. I guess my question was sort of around the latter half of what you mentioned. I know Councilmember Nueva Camina mentioned, you know, other states looking at anti-abortion laws or what we're doing specific to immigrants, you know? It makes me think about the, the Muslim ban and how folks might have been prosecuted for that. And so if there's other states, other jurisdictions that do reach out for that information, are we essentially like going by the laws that are governing us in Washington State?
Yes. So we go by the laws that govern us here in Washington State and, you know, for, for the community to make it very clear, because this comes up from time to time, we do not share information with, I'll say, federal authorities from ICE and from an immigration perspective. We do not participate in any of those types of investigations or anything like that. So, you know, for our community to just rest assured that that is not, while that is a concern, we do not, you know, participate in that, we do not share information, you know, in that particular manner.
That's really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add on to that, I think it's a really great point brought up by my colleagues, and I'm wondering, just to strengthen this policy, even if maybe that's something that we already do through other policies, that to just have that written in here, is the specifications of who this data, what kind of entities this data would be shared with, wouldn't be shared with? And then maybe even if we wanted to more explicitly say certain purposes that this data would not be used for, like, for example, tracking people based on, you know, immigration-related investigations or something like that? I think that would be, we could, we could maybe gather a list before we pass the policy, but I think to be able to be super clear, either about exactly what it is used for or some of the restrictions on the use, would be great to add into this policy to make it a little bit stronger. I thought I saw some, some hands. All right, Councilmember Stewart.
Thanks. And that, that's a really good catch. I appreciate that comment from the council president. I think I have one last question, Chief, and then I'll kind of wrap up my thoughts on this, and thanks for your patience, both of you. Deterrence, you've discussed tonight as quite a major goal of having something like the automatic license plate readers. The other proposed grantees for this particular grant include Seattle and the Sheriff's Office. But already in our state and here on the east side, we have a few cities, little tiny ones, but Clyde Hill, Medina, Yarrow Point, they are using this. What are you hearing from your peers and colleagues around the effectiveness of the deterrence in those communities?
So I'll speak specifically to Medina. They get a number of stolen vehicle hits when the vehicles, you know, come off of 520, obviously a small department, and I won't get about their patrol force secrets, but a small department, but it then allows them to respond more quickly, you know, to those particular areas. And then even from a perspective, from a deterrence perspective, because, you know, when you have a stolen vehicle, yes, the laws, you know, have recently reverted around pursuits and that type of thing. You're not necessarily going to engage in a pursuit just of a stolen vehicle, but just from a deterrence perspective, I think that's where this, I'll say, is worth its weight in gold, because as we've seen the crime trends over the last several years, and it goes back, and I don't want to give, you know, I'll say, credit to certain groups, but we know Kia's were a big thing and still are. So at least if we, you know, again, have that hit, we can send officers to the area. We're fortunate enough to have other technologies available so that we can then utilize, you know, and again, going back to Star Chase, we can deploy that tag to then track that vehicle and, you know, to hopefully apprehend the suspects and/or at a bare minimum to at least recover the, the victim's, you know, stolen car and not endanger the public by engaging in a pursuit necessarily. So again, I think that's where, you know, its weight in gold is, is from that perspective. And then I think the other side of it is, when we do have a crime that occurs and we do have a described vehicle, and then we can then go back and say, okay, we can create a timeline, because we know that that vehicle, you know, passed by these locations or vice versa, a vehicle comes into town, you know, commits a crime, we can then backtrack and see exactly, you know, when it came in, the path that it traveled. And these are things that are very important for follow-up investigations. Oftentimes, people think of cell phones and tracking cell phones, and that, that has its place. This here is just an additional layer to help, you know, I'll say, bring, you know, criminals to justice by having this objective data that is not, you know, like I said, there is no bias in it, it's the fact that, you know, this car was at this location at this time. And that, that is very helpful.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. Thank you, Chief. I think that's helpful. So I'll just, by way of like kind of wrapping up my thoughts on this, I think this decision's really, really hard, because I think the council and the mayor's office, and I think we all need to hear from the public anew. I think it's been a while since we've had conversations with community. We saw in the survey results tonight, I'm worried about crime, but we know crime's not actually increasing, but I'm worried about it. So I'm left with the question, does the public want us to adopt tools like this, or are we? we still a bit afraid of them like we have been in the past? And lots of other departments come to us with really cool tools, Public Works has some great ones too, but there have been more requests from your department on these evolving technologies, I guess I'll say. So to the extent that some of the concerns that have been raised tonight can be integrated in the policy, I think that was a really great suggestion from the council president, and then we can continue to listen to community and actively seek that out. And also, another thing from the earlier conversation on the survey results is, we saw, as councilmember Salah Hadeen pointed out, like how highly rated as both important and something we are doing well as our strategies to tackle affordable housing. I kind of think we saw that we're not telling our story on crime prevention as well, maybe? And so as we're adopting these technologies and trying them out, thinking about how we're telling that story to community too, I think could be important as we go along. So that's kind of where I am on the matter. Thanks, Chief.
And if I would, just to, I'll say, point out or remind that, you know, this ask comes with the money to pay for it. So yes, there is an ask for technology, but the grant will pay for it at a bare minimum. If allowed to accept the grant, then that gives us a two-year period to actually prove the technology to, I'll say, have wins, because I'm confident that we will actually have wins based upon implementing this technology. And then if at that point the decision is made that either, you know, we can't pay for it or it's not worth it, then I would just ask that we at least be, you know, given the opportunity, you know, to try and prove it, because, you know, I come with the money to pay for it.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. I was just going to mention the topics brought up by councilmember Nova Camina and councilmember Salah Hadeen about ICE and other states and suggest exactly what you suggested about putting that in this policy. I think I'd be much more comfortable having that in here. And I lost my other thought, so call me back if I'm fine.
Councilmember Salah Hadeen?
Yeah, thank you. And I really appreciate you bringing us back to the grant opportunity, and, you know, I definitely don't want to leave money from the Department of Commerce on the table, especially when other jurisdictions are also moving forward with opportunities. Going back to councilmember Nova Camina's point on, you know, how long we're holding on to the data, I know that, you know, if we have these first two years to just look at how the program's working, maybe a provision within the contract of the first two years can be that we don't hold on to the data for 30 days and it is a shortened time period. And if we find in these two years that we actually need more lead time for investigations, that we're missing out on a lot of actual, you know, crime solving within that 30-day period of when data could be used, we can look back at the contract and hopefully adjust that. But I think, you know, I definitely don't want to leave the money on the table, knowing that, you know, we're all focused on reducing the crime, and this does provide opportunities for that, and also understanding that we have some concerns on that data holding.
Thank you. And I will weigh in that I'm also, you know, torn on this, I think, because per the first item tonight, as some other councilmembers mentioned, I think our public is really interested in seeing, making sure it's a safe, we have a safe community and addressing any sorts of crime. And one of the things we have seen in the data is property crime and especially car-related thefts. You know, that's one area that we have seen increasing in recent years, and it is compelling to me with this tool that it addresses specifically around cars, right? So that's, I think, really interesting, but I, you know, obviously share my colleagues' questions around the privacy and data sharing pieces. I think if we're, if we want to move forward with this, for me, I think it'd be great with the communications to let folks know that it's a pilot. So, you know, if we were to go two years pilot and to gather feedback from the public on this. I also think a couple different ideas were brought up around just the policy tonight, and I would love to be able to run this by some, you know, data privacy-focused groups, just to be able to get their thoughts on any ways that we could strengthen it, while also hopefully taking advantage of this grant and this technology to be able to more efficiently address some of the issues, especially the, a lot of the kind of business repeat crimes and property crime issues that have come up. Thanks. Oh, and I guess I will call on councilmember Nova Camina.
Thank you. One last comment around the, of it for me. I most definitely don't ever want to leave money on the table, and I also want to be sensitive that sometimes the cost isn't monetarily, because it comes at a much higher stake. And I want our residents to have trust, not only with us as a council, but also with the police department, to where they feel that they're safe, not only because of the protection that they provide tactfully, but also from a data perspective as well. And just making sure that, and I understand that in some ways, 94,000 and change is a pretty good chunk of change. And I know that when it comes to the security of the data and of the rights of our residents, 94,000 is nothing compared to that. So I just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence so that we are instilling trust and being trustworthy on multiple levels, both on how we could do this and do it very right, but also looking at to avoid doing it wrong. Wrong by meaning where we're going to decrease any trust that is on the table to lose. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I'm not seeing any other questions here. Council, in terms of moving forward on this, it seems like there are still some questions out there about potential revisions to the policy. Do we want to kick this back to a committee for another review? Or maybe we can just do a go-around and if folks can share whether they're ready to go to a vote with potential revisions made in advance, or whether you'd like to keep working on this for a while? Council Vice President Forsyth?
What's the timeline for the grant acceptance? If you can remind us?
So the deadline to accept the grant is this Friday.
Oh.
Okay.
So you would need direction from the council today to go accept it? Okay.
And I would just point out, so acceptance of the grant, there's still the process with the quote, the sites are, there's still time to make the revisions to the policy and the things that are necessary. It's just that obviously, you know, everybody understands the grant process, we have to let them know that, you know, we're accepting and moving forward, or release it so they can give it to, you know, someone else.
Got it. Thank you for the clarity on that. And so we would take a vote to confirm the acceptance after you informally told them that we accept it, or formally told them, but you would have the approval from council later with the policy attached?
Yes. I need either approval to move forward and accept or not before, you know, before I leave tonight, and then the rest of it we will put in place. My staff is here, they've taken note of the requested revisions to the policy. We will get that done. I will commit to having that to you guys by the end of the week for review with those particular additions. And then if allowed to accept, then we go through the normal contract process, so it would come back before you when we actually have the contract, you know, front flock for that part and piece of it.
Great, thanks. Well, I guess let's go around and share where we think. Councilmember Anderson?
Just to clarify, so are we talking about allowing you to apply for the grant or to accept the grant? Because normally the acceptance comes through a business meeting.
So this would be acceptance, right? We've already applied and we're awarded, so this would be acceptance.
So we would need to do that at the next business meeting, which isn't going to meet the Friday deadline?
So I guess my understanding would be that we could give direction potentially to Chief Lowe to let them know, I guess that the city accepts the grant, but we would have to vote on it later, I'm not sure. CO files, I'm seeing you over there, I'm wondering if you have any thoughts on the process here?
So I think council can give authorization to go ahead and have the chief tell the granting agency that we will accept the grant. If that's what council wants to do, he can come back and you can formally accept it at a council meeting. And then that would give the finance department the instruction to basically recognize the revenue from the grant.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Yep. And then is it possible, since there were some questions about this, and I would have some follow-up and be interested in hearing what those follow-ups are, so that we could separate the data governance policy from the grant acceptance action? Is it possible to do both of those separately?
Yes, I'm glad to separate that, and if we want to bring it, you know, back to committee or a shorter piece of another study session specifically around that, but my commitment remains the same, I will make the requested changes for your review, so in that way, whenever it gets queued back up, we're ready to, you know, I'll say, dance that dance.
Thank you.
And councilmember Anderson, would you be supportive of the chief signing, accepting that grant this Friday?
Take the money.
Okay. I've got one there. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. And I'll just say for listening public or anyone who has concerns, you know, with this conversation tonight, we're going to see an updated version of the policy. It sounds like integrating our feedback from tonight. I would also say for the public, our next business meeting is not until August 5th, so if you continue to have, if anyone has concerns that they continue to want to raise with us, we still have time for that too, and I just want to allow for that. But yes, given that our feedback from tonight can be integrated and that we can be dedicated to telling the story, including the great stories of crimes prevented or crimes solved, and really commit to that communication over the next couple of years and learn, I'm comfortable moving forward. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Salah Hadeen?
Yeah, yeah, I'm comfortable moving forward, and just want to amplify what Chief Lowe mentioned specifically around my concern with ICE and looking at immigration status, and alleviating that concern is really important for, you know, me saying yes to this as well, so thank you.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
I would echo the, what councilmember Salah Hadeen just said, and add that if we are talking about this as a pilot, as you had mentioned, because this grant is only for two years, I'm much more comfortable with that framing. And again, as councilmember Stewart said, we have a chance for our community to come August 5th, it's a Monday for everybody, and let us know your thoughts on this technology. And in agreement with councilmember Anderson on separating the policy out, so we can continue building that and working on that as well.
Councilmember Fields?
It's, I think, Chief Lowe heard what the council has said, I think he made that clear when he answered my question, that he's thought about it. I think it's time that we move forward with this for the grant, and move forward planning for the pilot, and move forward planning for the right statements and the right protections in the policy. And I think my almost listening mode over the past hour, I believe that the mayor's office and the police chief is in a lot of agreement with the council, and I think it's, we made a lot more progress than what might be thought that we had. So yes, absolutely, please move forward.
Great, thank you so much. Councilmember Nova Camina?
Thank you. I'm, I am agreeing to move forward, and the question was, are you comfortable moving forward? I'm not comfortable moving forward, and I would still move forward on it. And it's more to do with the process, because as a council, we are saying yes, we're going to approve moving forward with taking the grant. Taking the grant therefore says that we're on board with all of this moving forward. However, if we've already put it out there to say yes, then we don't, and maybe I'm missing it, but do we have something to where, with the concerns that this council has raised tonight, and if the policy does not reflect those terms, then we've already put in motion to move forward? Do we have something to then pull that back that I'm missing?
Thank you, councilmember Nova Camina. I would suggest that we could give the direction to, for the chief to move forward with the grant funds, but with the stipulation, we couldn't turn the cameras on until the data governance policy is passed, in which case we could ensure that the guardrails that we want to put on the use of the data of that technology is included first. I'm not sure if that answers your issue, but that was going to be my suggestion.
That does answer, or it does speak to it. Thank you.
Great. Are other councilmembers good? Council Vice President Forsyth?
Just a quick question on if not turning the cameras on or calling this a pilot is in any ways in, and not allowed through the grant as it's laid out?
No, nothing that's been suggested is problematic. We have sufficient time to address the concerns of council, get the policy dialed in to, you know, I'll say everyone's satisfaction or at least comfort level with it. You know, we can't do it tomorrow, there's a timeline. This is, a number of municipalities are moving forward with this, so we have time. So all these concerns can absolutely be addressed. And then, you know, to councilmember Nova Camina's concerns, I've heard you, and I said I'm committed to making the adjustments as you guys have directed, so that, you know, this meets everyone's satisfaction, because it's important, it's an important tool, you know, for this department, for this community to move forward. So I will make sure that everyone is as comfortable as they can be, you know, with the policy, and we have the guardrails in place so that you can feel comfortable.
Great, thank you. And what would be the estimated time that the technology would actually be available if we go forward now?
I'm going to say conservatively the end of the year, just with their, I'll say, installation schedule and, you know, getting the contract and getting the contract through our own internal process, so that realistically probably is not before September at the earliest to get that part or piece through. So we're probably talking the end of the year, beginning part of next year.
Great. Well, that sounds like that gives us the time to finalize our conversations without actually impeding any of the process, it would just go along. That was my hope when I made that proposal, was that technology takes a little while to install and purchase and all those pieces, so. Okay, well, it sounds like we have agreement for you to move forward with this, and we will also expect to see two items coming back for us to work on, and we'll figure out kind of the best way as council leadership in terms of having those two items show up, and one would be the acceptance of the grant, I think, at a future business meeting, and then the data policy specifically on this.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Chief, also for being innovative, trying to seek out opportunities to best serve our public. I just want to recognize that intention of your department to look for a lot of different ways to best address, you know, the needs and desires for better public safety and better service, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll close out this item. The final item on our agenda is council talk time. So there are two items on the agenda that we have attached here with council talk time, and then, of course, as usual, we can open it up for any items that council members want to discuss. Seeing one council member took a little break, maybe we should take a five-minute break before we jump into council talk time? Are councilmembers good? Or now I'm seeing around here not any nodding heads, so we'll just keep on going. Okay, great. So the first item that is attached here is a council ombuds process, which council leadership worked on with Deidre, our legislative coordinator, to try to come up with a clearer set of practices specifically to work with our legislative coordinator for council members when they are the ombuds during a particular are the ombuds during a particular month. And for the listening public, the ombuds person is a role that changes. Each council member takes it on at different months of the year and responds to questions and different issues that come from the public. We also wanted to outline what the process is if we get something for mayor council and how we engage with the mayor's staff on this. So we tried to be specific on, you know, how these would work, but kind of then wanted to put it out to the council to get your feedback and see if this is a useful document. The hope would be to just have more documented on ombuds and in particular to assist in the use of our new legislative coordinator to help council members when they do have their ombuds month. So I'll open it up. Council Vice President Forsyth, did you have any other comments on this document? Just wanted to present it to the council.
No, I think you presented it well.
So any comments or questions, proposed revisions on this? Councilmember Salahuddin?
Yeah, on the mayor council email, I know that there's some emails that come specific to event invitations, things of that nature that aren't necessarily policy or, you know, issue areas where it, you know, I'm more than, it's not too much effort to, you know, make the mayor's office aware of emails that are coming in that we would like to respond to. But when it's, is there something that we could add in where if it's directed at an invitation or something of that sort that we can just respond without having to loop back through the mayor's office?
So the request would be for invitations that individuals could or that the ombuds could respond?
That individuals could.
Yeah, so on any of these, this is who is responding on behalf of the whole body, but I would say for either things that are responded to from the ombuds or things that are responded to from the mayor's office, you can always respond individually, just be clear that you are responding as an individual. Is that, is that not clear in the writing of it?
Yeah, but just without having to make the mayor's office made aware of the intention to respond, I guess, yeah.
Oh, I see. Yeah, that they should let them know that they, yeah, I think so. But it's good to specify that they, you shouldn't have to do that. I think that's only, yeah, I think that's only if, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at this. This line.
Maybe we could give our feedback and have the-
Yeah, let's keep going, yeah. Helpful feedback, thank you.
Integration happen offline.
Great, yeah. Great. Councilmember Anderson?
I have a couple of comments on this, just to add in general. I think this is a little bit overstructured. Personally, I have issues with time for addressing ombud items, especially when there's astroturfing or anything like that that goes on. So one thing I noticed is the continued replies from prior months. Number one, the council member should continue to be the point of contact for as long as the topic remains the same. I think you mean the individual remains the same, since topics, say if we get 100 emails about affordable housing, one thing that will come in is a, an email that you'll continue with a particular person, but not necessarily on that topic, because then that topic would be carried by only one council member and it'd be more likely that the OPMA would be a violation in that regard, I think. That's just a, an over general comment. And then also, I'd like to see the general response be two weeks, because that's when we have our business meetings and reports. Or perhaps an alternative would be making it a weekly process that we can add to our talk time.
Great, thank you very much. Great points. Any other comments on this? And Councilmember Salahuddin, just to get back to yours, I think that line, now I'm looking at it more closely, could be worded more effectively based on, you know, which things it would be helpful to coordinate in copying response and which things typically it's not necessary for our council member to copy their, because I think the way it's written, it sounds like you're supposed to copy the mayor's response team on everything, and I don't think that's the intention. Go ahead.
Absolutely, and completely appreciate you taking that offline as well. And if we can add, you know, I would love to second Councilmember Anderson's point on the response time, just in moving forward with that.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I think just having a time-bound amount of time for responses is helpful, but recognizing that what's proposed here seems a little bit short for some is helpful. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you for working on this, and especially, this was an item from the retreat, and it's great to see it picked up here. I think there's a lot that's really helpful in here. So for instance, although maybe there's some finessing that needs to happen, the idea that a council member should continue to carry on, we actually had a bit of a confusing moment earlier in the spring, and I think a resident ended up interacting with three different ombuds, basically to deal with the same issue. And so this will be super clarifying to have. I wonder on the 48 to 72 hours, that seems reasonable to me, maybe if we clarified that it's business days or something like that. As a just member of the community, it just doesn't feel great when you get, when you feel unheard, even a quick like, I see your message, and I'm working with the staff to get back to you. Sometimes that's what I do, or I'm waiting, you know, on a little bit more information to provide a more robust response. But whatever we agree to, it would be great to agree to that collectively so that we can also know what to expect from one another throughout the process. And I think working with the legislative coordinator has been working really well for those who've had a chance to do that so far.
Yeah, and I will jump in again, sorry, on the timeline to add as well, that I think the intention here was for general practice, that you would send just that initial, we received your email and we're working on a response. I think in some cases, it might take longer, but that you would have that, hopefully then the legislative coordinator would help you with drafting the longer response or researching it. But that way, there is that, like constituent knows they got, we got an email. We did talk about with our legislative coordinator whether she could send the initial one and just say, the council has received your message, they'll be back to you soon on this. But I know in the past, there has been some interest in council being able to be always the ones who are responding to our own emails, so I'll just throw that out since we're having that discussion as well, in case that's of interest to folks. Council Vice President Forsyth?
So wherever we land on the amount of time for response, I think it would be pertinent to have that listed on the website, so that if we land on, you know, 72 hours return time that people know to expect three days before they get a response, if that turns into a week. I, I mean, personally, if I'm ombuds, I think three days is a fair amount for me personally for how I schedule it. But I know everybody's schedule is very different. But I just want to make sure we're being very transparent with the community when they send us an email of maybe what they should expect.
Yeah, thank you. One other note on the pass, the piece around passing between individuals or someone following a topic. I think the note about that it should be the individual who wrote this, not the topic, because we get a lot of emails on the same topic is a great catch. And we did, we did actually check into this because of the three council members thing, where we've had some constituents writing to us over many months, and we've ended up sometimes passing between ombuds. And we looked into the OPMA issue, that if we had four ombuds in a row that were passing an email, the fourth one would create a serial meeting if it was all on the same email chain. So that's why we decided, with recommendation from the clerk, that we do just have, if you're on an email chain as the ombuds person, you follow that one to avoid any OPMA violations. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Continuing on that, if you are unable to, for whatever reason, after you roll off your month, coordinating with the next ombuds to make sure that they understand that they're going to be taking over that topic and not creating that serial moment. So just lots of communication with each other if, say, you know your next month is really hectic and you just can't continue following up on something, just to have that touch point, have that conversation. So we don't want to stop folks from being able to hand things off, but we want to try to make sure that the same follow-through is happening.
And I will say, you know, overall, the goal as our conversation with the legislative coordinator is really to take a lot of the kind of research stuff off of councils, so hopefully she can really be that resource. I know when I've been ombuds, she was really helpful, just like going to the relevant staff gathering and then helping to write the summary and give you a lot of the content to respond to the constituent, but then also allow you to be able to send that personal message and copy the council on it. So hopefully this is helpful and people will use her. Councilmember Anderson?
How would this apply to physical mail?
I guess, I don't know. Currently, I don't think we have a formal way of responding to physical mail. That's a good question.
We've gotten a couple of those this year.
That is a good question. Councilmember Stewart?
I do remember running into this question when I was brand new on the council, and I remember asking if we had, like, council stationery, you know, to respond on, and the answer was no. So, yeah, that's a tricky one.
It's a good point, though, if we wanted to add it into our process. I will note that we did add a process this last year, maybe it was two years ago now, that for, when people come to our business meetings and they sign up and say that they want a follow-up, we do put that into a spreadsheet and council leadership are the ones who respond to that, or council members can volunteer if they really want to, to do particular ones. But we did add that as a process, because we realized that was kind of a miss, where people who were coming to speak to us said they wanted a follow-up weren't necessarily getting it, so we were doing that. So we could add in here if we wanted to add to the ombuds job paper mail, or we could potentially just ask the legislative coordinator to draft that with the review of council leadership.
I like the option of making the mail in the pile of the meeting stuff, personally.
Councilmember Salahuddin?
And just looking at the rules of procedure for council responses, I believe when it comes to ombuds, it's saying that we should copy the mayor on everything as well. So just want to clarify, either we correct that in the rules of procedure or figure out the proper cadence of what we're doing.
Thanks for that catch. Yeah, and we should, after taking some of this feedback, we can review this document and then also look back to the rules of procedure in the ombud section to make sure that they align. It's a great catch, thank you. Councilmember Fields?
So I'm just going to explain why I don't weigh in on this, which is, of course, what I'm doing, weighing in on it. Actually, the whole process, I've never understood, and I don't, I'm not making any suggestions because what I'm going to say is a little bit too radical, I think. But from my old-school thinking, ombuds is really a point of escalation when something couldn't get resolved. So it feels to me like council takes on these issues way too soon. The departments, the mayor's office, all should be trying to handle this. Then if it doesn't get resolved and it comes to ombuds, it's not the, the way we're set up, it's not the individual ombuds person who should resolve it, it's something that, and we do this every business meeting, we bring it back to the council. And if it's an issue that can't be resolved under normal circumstances, then council is on council to say, why can't that be resolved? And collectively, no OPMA violation, because we're going to all talk about it and say we need a new policy, or we need a better understanding of the policy, or we need to provide the mayor direction on how to fulfill the policy. So to me, I'm just venting a little bit. So again, I don't have any good suggestions. To me, it's a mess, because we get involved when we shouldn't be. And that's my take on ombuds.
Thank you. And I will, I think, appreciate that perspective, and I will note that I think some of the goal with us thinking about how to engage the legislative coordinator is to address a little bit of what you're saying, so that the ombuds person could say, could flag, this issue came to us, give it to the legislative coordinator, who can first do the vetting to say, is there anyone within the city who's best suited to address this resident's concern or something that's already going on? And then, you know, and then, but then because they wrote to their council member to make sure they get the touchback, that's like, yeah, they got this, but really, who do they engage? And because oftentimes, you know, the council, the ombuds may pass something on and then a director replies ultimately and copies the council. So, Councilmember Salahuddin?
I was just going to bring up, I believe Councilmember Fields memorized the rules of procedure, because the definition of ombuds person in there is exactly how he described it. So I think aligning ourselves with that will be important as we're setting these other rules in place.
Did you have a comment? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thanks. I'll take that and add to it. So I think, I think that Councilmember Fields is right. Folks do write to us when they feel something needs to be elevated, something they're not getting a response on, or not finding the answer to, is usually one of the ways I experience that. Sometimes the inbound inquiries or feedback really is directed at council, hey, you all should consider a policy on this, or the policy isn't working. And so sometimes it needs to be sent to staff, and sometimes it needs to be just brought to the council, and sometimes it just needs to be heard. When we talk about those moments of like, you know, mass feedback from any particular topic or something like that, sometimes folks, like the best we can do in that case is to say, we heard your message, we took in your feedback. And so I would almost, so since I imagine this document someday living in a council onboarding binder, which is another one of our retreat items to get back to, I would almost think some kind of table here that's like, if you got this type of response, then this is the type of outcome you're looking for. Maybe it has three columns, maybe it has four, something like that. Could be helpful for the longevity of this document.
Yeah, I think that's actually a great, great idea, because we talked about this with Deidre about how, you know, there's a bunch of things that she'll be able to go research, but there's some things that it's just really to say, we heard your opinion, there's not actually a question in here. Thank you for sharing, and we'll keep it in mind, especially because as the ombuds, you can't answer with the opinion on behalf of the whole council what everyone thinks, but you can say, we all heard it and we'll keep it in mind and, you know, any other relevant information. But, so I think, and sometimes I think the way we do it is that we often copy other ombuds people's previous responses like that, so it would be good to have a couple standardized ones that work well. Maybe we could add that as page two of this document. All right. See, no other questions. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a hopper item that I actually submitted. So I'll just introduce it very briefly. I'm going to note that I'm not going to go super in detail here, because there are some laws governing exactly how we can talk about this, but I'll state what my proposal, which is where I can, if you all agree, then I can share many more of my thoughts on this. But I would say the proposal that's before us is for the city council to hold a hearing at the September 3, 2024 business meeting, or sooner if the timing permits, but I will say that I think that's probably the soonest timing. And the proposal would be for us to hold the hearing and vote on the attached draft resolution for the council to declare its official position in opposition to initiative 2117, which will be on the ballot this November, which reads as follows, "This measure would prohibit state agencies from imposing any type of carbon tax credit trading, including cap and trade or cap and tax programs, regardless of whether the resulting increased costs are imposed on fuel recipients or fuel suppliers. It would repeal sections of the 2021 Washington Climate Commitment Act as amended, including repealing the creation and modification of a cap and invest program to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by specific entities." And the reason I'm making this proposal is that the RCW does allow council to take an action to express a collective decision or to actually vote on a motion proposal or ordinance to support or oppose a ballot measure, as long as the agenda includes the title and the number of the ballot proposition, and that also members of the public and council members are afforded an approximately equal opportunity to express a supporting or opposing view. So this would give us that opportunity in a city where we have declared a climate emergency. We've received funds from the Climate Commitment Act. I think that it would be relevant for us to hold this hearing and consider this resolution. And thank you to my co-sponsors, Councilmember Stewart and Council Vice President Forsyth, on this proposal. I'll open it up if there are any other comments from them. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. I'm looking forward to hopefully being able to hold this conversation in our city. First and foremost, we've been asked by our residents to do so. It's something that has been a topic of conversation, not only at items from the audience, but also in my office hours as well. At the AWC conference last June, I heard a lot of- At the AWC conference last June, I heard a lot of cities worrying, as the verb all choose, worrying about the potential impact of some of the upcoming choices, that it can feel like we don't have an opportunity to educate our communities on, and this particular initiative would have an impact on our city, and this would give us the chance to explain more about what that is in that discussion, and to hear their feedback as well. So I think actually Councilmember Salah Houdin and Councilmember Fields were in the room during one of the sessions where, again, city was saying, "Yeah, but there's nothing we can do to educate the public," and I spoke up at that point. I don't think my colleagues knew at this point that we were working on this, but to say, "Actually, we can," and MRSC did an article on this earlier in the season, too, just to make sure that everyone was aware, and the proposal in front of us tonight is within the bounds of the RCW. So looking forward to the opportunity to have that conversation with our community.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. I am excited that this is being brought forward, I was excited to co-sign on it. I look forward to the opportunity for the public hearing, for the community to give feedback on this. I think we've heard loud and clear from our community that commitment to climate resiliency, climate change impacts, is something that we all very much value in this community. So I look forward to moving this forward. I know I was pushing for this to happen sooner, but whatever that timeline turns out to be, I look forward to hearing from our community and moving forward after that.
Thank you. Councilmember Noeve Kamina?
Thank you. Just a comment, one, I'm very excited about this, and I'm also deeply appreciative, Council President, for your foresight to bring this forward, and also for the co-sponsors to put their support behind it, both Council Vice President Forsyth and Councilmember Stewart. You know, just echoing what we've already heard, we know from our residents that this is important. It's another instance where I see, it's just an opportunity for us to live out our values and to take actions that are in alignment with them. So I'm very excited about this. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? I'm seeing at least four who are interested in moving forward on this proposal. Other, Councilmember Fields?
I think we have an obligation to do this. When we drafted and voted and passed the climate emergency, a big section of that was that we would, in fact, be a voice for the values and the principles we laid out in that declaration. So I think this is, this and many other times, we have opportunities to do that. And I don't think it's something that we, I don't necessarily see it as a choice. I see it as an obligation.
Thank you, Councilmember Fields. Councilmember Salah Houdin?
Yep, I agree that, you know, this is really critical, and having that public hearing to hear from community members on their thoughts regarding, you know, anything related to the initiative is going to be really critical. Looking at the, you know, funded projects in Redmond in our materials, roughly around $7 million worth of projects, which, you know, is really important for the investment that we're placing in our future of Redmond, and making sure that, you know, we are amplifying not only, you know, what these projects mean to the city and to our residents, but also the fact that, you know, they're contingent on another source, that's going to be really important to hear from community members on their perspectives as well. So I support this.
Thank you. I see a thumbs up from Councilmember Anderson. All right, so I guess we're good to move forward, to schedule this for the September meeting, and can let the public know about that hearing opportunity. Thank you. Yay. All right, so I'll open it up to Council Talk Time, other items. I do have one more that I wanted to bring up, but I've been talking a lot. So Council Vice President Forsyth?
I will just say ballots are out now, and vote now.
Any other comments before I do my last one? All right, I'm not seeing any, so I will jump in on one other thing. I just wanted to let the council know, I noted this in my email to you all this week, that Council Vice President Forsyth and I have been in talks with Lisa Mar about the baseline budget for council that we'll see. We had a little discussion on this during the first budget touch on baseline, but there was kind of a follow-up, because I think we've been exceeding expenses in certain categories or kind of creeping up to the line, but also, certain areas got adjusted during the pandemic downward, and may need some sorts of adjusting just within the baseline to align with historical trends. So you'll see in the email that I sent you all this week, in particular on travel, and then tuition and training, as well as legal, those are just some categories which I think historically had been funded, or at least the travel and training had been historically, you'll see, funded a lot higher. The council wasn't necessarily taking advantage of it, especially starting in 2020, we spent almost no money, because we couldn't go anywhere. So then we dropped that budget down, but now we're seeing a council that's able to get out, going to a lot more events and a lot more things. So we propose that we increase that budget just within the baseline for the next biennium, so we'll be seeing that, and just wanted to flag that for feedback. The other thing I just wanted to flag, because it was news to me, is on our legal category, you'll see in here kind of how much we've spent versus how much we've budgeted in the last several years. We really exceeded the amount that was budgeted. But, you know, even hearing in terms of what actually has gotten included in that, just as kind of the basics for preparing for our meetings, executive sessions, other types of things, I think it's already kind of low. But the other piece that I will flag that I was not aware of is that our city attorney does bill us by the hour for even when he answers one of our emails or gets one of our phone calls, and so he bills, it's public record, $340 for every hour that he works. So there's no like, I thought there might be some sort of retainer or some sort of thing, so where we could like ask a question, but we might have racked up a slightly higher bill over time in the last several years, just with a lot of questions or ideas. I myself have gone, even in the last several weeks, to ask some questions to our city attorney, which I am not saying that we shouldn't do, but I think will be something for us to look at. We will be, I think, increasing the overall legal budget, but also would just say to council members to be mindful, before you go to legal, think if you could go to a staff member and ask them a question, and get that answer from them, and just to kind of, for us all to be mindful of that in terms of the potential costs when we do engage the city attorney. So that was all I just wanted to highlight. Councilmember Salah Houdin?
Thank you. Just wanted to touch base on sort of one of our subcommittees, for the sake of transparency, I know a lot of decisions will be made moving forward, especially as we're looking at the budget, but the Alternative Crisis Response Subcommittee, and I'll also defer to Council Vice President Forsyth and Councilmember Noeve Kamina, if there's anything that, you know, I don't include or miss, that's critical, but just wanted to give a very brief overview on some of the discussions that we've been having, especially since it came up in the survey, and we, you know, a letter last year was filed by council to go to RACER, or the Regional Crisis Response Model, in the north urban cities, and right now, they have 14 full-time staff, and the estimate for Redmond's participation would require an additional four FTEs, and currently, there is no interest in new partners in their program. We've been, you know, our staff has been really, really good at working with them in figuring out where they're at with that process, but we've been meeting, I think, I don't know how many meetings we've had, we've had two meetings, and we have one scheduled for just a few weeks out now, but Chief Lowe did share a guide for alternative response programs, and we're in discussions of what opportunities we have to grow our alternative crisis response within the city. I'll pass it to any of my colleagues if they have anything else to add, but just wanted to give you an update on sort of where the dialogue and discussion is there.
Thank you, Councilmember Salah Houdin. I'll note that we tomorrow, as you know, we have our meeting for the funding for public safety, so it's super helpful, an open session to hear anything that's been going on in this subcommittee that you all are able to share, just to know kind of what are we budgeting for, what's the current vision? Thank you. All right. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Yeah, thank you. So just looking at the chart that you shared via email, that has the baseline budget, I believe, lower than the emails that we had been exchanging with Director Mar? Is that correct?
The, I just did the chart going through this year, not what we're planning to do.
Thank you, sorry. Clearly not thinking into budget season yet. Got it.
But yeah, what we had suggested, going back to that item, is that we increase, you'll see, the last time, our budget was about $5,900 for travel and $2,100 for tuition and training, but in the past, travel had been as high as $17,000 budgeted, and tuition and training had been as high as like $4,100. So just looking at increasing both of those, I think travel maybe up to like $10,000, so that way it would just allow us to be able to go to NLC, go to, you know, different conferences, be able to go and engage, and increasing some of that tuition training, probably those two flexible together. And I think legal, we were discussing, potentially doing $20,000 for baseline, or maybe $25,000. I'm looking at this now. So you'll see it come to you, but I just wanted to flag that we're having those conversations, and also be mindful that we're at budget on a lot of these items for this year, doesn't mean that we, I don't want to say no on anything, but if you are going to be wanting to attend anything, or, and then on legal things, just be mindful on that as well, as you use those. Councilmember Stewart?
Thanks, yeah. Since it sounds like council leadership's kind of essentially working on an offer for the council budget, then on these three categories, I think it'd be helpful to articulate, as we get further down the line, kind of what that looks like. So, you know, our council of the last few biennia doesn't have a strong tradition of like, every single member travels to DC for NLC. That happens in some cities, that's not what we have at the moment. I don't know that that's what we want at the moment, but I would say, the benefits of being able to go and learn how to do these jobs that we work so hard to get elected to, it's just really, really valuable. So like we say, whenever there's staff in the room, we want everyone to have the tools to do their jobs, and I think that includes the council in these ways, these opportunities are really important. And then legal is, you know, something, sometimes, I'm looking back at some of these historical numbers and just contextually kind of knowing what was going on, and those can't be anticipated. So to the extent that we can articulate kind of some of the vision for the other two categories, and how comfortable we're leaving the margins on the other, I think that'd be helpful. Thanks.
Yeah, and I will also take responsibility, as Council President, that I think, we haven't had super clear processes for either of these, of like council members checking in on like where we're at on budget, or me updating you, and I think that is certainly my responsibility, so I'm doing that now. But I think we might also look at like, if there are any processes, just have the check to make sure where are we at on budget before we do an additional thing that would be an expense against a category, and so, and to just try to work on that going forward. So I'll bring the proposal back on that as well. Okay, any other items for Council Talk Time? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.